This is the meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy Valentine's Day. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on March first, two thousand and twenty-two, at ten thirty a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during a meeting. Okay, ready for roll call? Rich is not here today. And Lloyd is here for the commission. And approval of the January twenty-fourth minutes? Were there any comments or corrections?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Move to approve.
A second.
Motion and second to approve? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and then we have approval of February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes. Any changes, corrections?
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 And then approval of today's agenda? The following items have been... Do I read this?
Co-SAC Environmental Planner, I can read it.
Okay, let's go to... Well, we need to approve the agenda, anyway. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now consent agenda.
Co-SAC Environmental Planner. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff or staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will take, who will make the final decision. Item four is conditional use primary review CU eighteen-twenty-six. The applicant is Kellyanne Brenda Hanson. It's to review a recreation vehicle to be used for no more than one hundred and eighty calendar days on the subject property and to also allow the recreation vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in an agriculture district in accordance with sections two oh five and five-ten of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff's recommendation is to approve the extension of conditional use permit CU eighteen-twenty-six with conditions. And item five is conditional use permit review CU twenty-eighteen. It's for Wildfriend Solar LLC. Melissa Schmidt is an agent. It's to review the utility scale solar energy system in agriculture district in accordance with sections two oh five and five-ten of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permits CU twenty-eighteen with conditions.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to have either of these items removed from the consent agenda? Staff? No? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, then?
This'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second to approve? All in favor say aye.
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 Item number six.
Item number six is conditional use permit CU twenty-one-sixty-five. It's to allow a vacation rental on the subject property. The applicant is Limestone Creek LLC Thomas Stowers, and the local contact and agent is Candace Jackson. This has been heard in front of you guys, in front of the Planning Commission several times. It's been continued to allow the applicant to submit a new sales tax license with the owner's name on it and for staff to perform a site visit. Staff has performed a site visit. They found that there are sleeping arrangements for fourteen people when they're only allowed ten, so staff did put a condition in there that they have to remove two regular beds or two bunk beds to bring that into compliance with ten overnight occupants. And they have submitted a new sales tax license with the owner's name on it, as well as the agent Candace Jackson emailed me this morning a copy of their operation plan and their information booklet that will be inside the VHR. So with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permits CU twenty-one-sixty-five
Any questions, discussion?
How many vacation rentals are in this particular group? Haven't we already okayed one?
I believe, yes, I believe you okayed, approved VHR on this property. So that would bring, this would be two that I'm aware of.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Cody, we spoke briefly, and I just wanted to get it on the record. Condition number three, I believe we've improved on that condition since the original... I would hope any motion would include, I wouldn't hang up your vote for it, would include the new wording of that in regards to notifying the people that stay there that it is available on the internet as what the current conditions. We wrote up a little thing that we've been using, and I would like that included in place of the number three that is there right now. And then my second one, and I don't know what to do on that because we actually have a letter that refers, I believe, somebody opposes this in regards to covenant. And I noticed that their application shows they didn't submit any covenants, but you and I talked, that may be an error.
Yeah, they, in their application, and I can confirm it as well, they submitted a copy of the covenants, and I read through it, and nowhere in there does it state that VHRs are specifically prohibited in the subdivision.
It looks like we're gonna have somebody from the audience speak and address that too, so.
So I believe, I believe it says commercial, that it's for single-family commercial uses, and how we, and Chotima might be able to speak better to it than I am because she did the one that was approved on the other lot. The way the county views it is that it's not a commercial use. We don't view it that way. If the homeowners association views it as that way, then it would be a civil matter between the HOA and Limestone Creek LLC, the property owner.
Correct. I understand that we as a planning commission and you as a department have to look at this as a residential use because of the decisions from the court in the state. But I did, we are supposed, if they are there, to consider them. And that's the only reason I brought it up is because our ordinance doesn't specifically relate to it. So let's wait and see what the conversation goes on that. That's all I'm trying to say is that it should be here on the docket while we're voting for this, is all I was bringing up. Thank you, Cody.
Sir, there's a public comments. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Aaron Lormar. I'm one of the residents of Oak Meadows Estates up there. And my biggest concern is in our covenants here, it specifically states that it's for a single-family use only. It doesn't go beyond that. It doesn't allow provisions for rentals, maybe for long-term rentals where it's a single family that's in there, not for vacation rentals. I don't see how this is getting circumvented or blatantly ignored, but I completely think it's wrong. It's a dead-end road that goes down Oak Meadows Court. The amount of traffic we're gonna be getting down there is, will be ridiculous, and I've, we've already noticed garbage, garbage cans, garbage laying around and everything from just what's been going on there since they first started this, so. That's about all I had.
Aaron?
Yeah.
When you said, "single-family residential use only," that's where the hang-up comes in. The courts, and I've been involved in both of the committees that served on the vacation home rental, and I was involved in it when it was first coming up. And it's very difficult. The ordinance does say that we consider covenants. The county does not, what would they say, enforce covenants for residents. That's a civil matter. But in the case of where it says, "single-family residence," the courts have decided that vacation home rental, or in South Dakota, that vacation home rental is a residential use.
They still consider that single-family, huh?
Yeah, they don't necessarily say, "single-family." They say, "residential uses," don't they, Cody?
So, Co-SAC Environmental Planner, there's a difference between, "single-family" and "multi-family." There's one, one living unit inside that house, so there's a kitchen, bathrooms, bedrooms, you know, living room. There's not another unit that's attached to it. That's where it'd become a multi-family dwelling. So we look at it as, that structure was built as a single-family residence. Equalization goes out and taxes it and assesses it as a single-family residence, not a multi-family dwelling. It's still, the way the county looks at it is, you still, even though people are renting from it, it's still one family using it as a residence. Even though it's like a nightly rental, it's still being used as what it was intended to be as a single-family residence.
But that decision to do that is based upon cases that have been decided that it is, vacation home rental is a residential use.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, yes. The court hasn't come out and said that it's specifically not a residential use.
Okay, so then the citizens there, like Aaron, this gentleman, and he's got, the folks there that may oppose it or that may support it, their only decision is to do it through civils, then the covenant, because of the definition, they're using, "single-family residence."
Correct. That'd be, that'd be the argument that the homeowners association would have to fight an illegal, legal battle against the homeowner. The only way the county enforces it is if it specifically states in the covenants, vacation home rentals are prohibited.
Okay. Aaron, can you, just to make sure, because Cody and I were gonna check the file, can you make sure you leave a copy, if possible, with?
I sure can. This is not the full...
No, we, just the page that relates to it would do.
Okay.
I assume there isn't any other buggy boos that are headed in there you'd have brought them up.
Not concerning this, no.
Okay.
It's just that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Kirk.
I have a question. Now, what did you say about the covenants? If it specifically says, "no vacation home rentals," then the county would get involved?
So if, if the covenants specifically state that no vacation home rentals are allowed, I don't even think staff would take that application in for a conditional use permit. If we did, it would be something that the Planning Commission would have to decide that they wanted to enforce.
Okay.
Since, but I don't even think we would take that application in.
And the other thing, then, these people with the vacation home rentals would have to have a tax license, number ID and all that, I assume, but it's still not considered commercial?
Correct. And I even, so I've had this conversation with some, with the state on it because we've had some other requests that have brought it up. The state doesn't even tax it as a commercial business. Or they, I shouldn't say they don't tax it as a commercial business, they don't consider it a commercial business. They just collect taxes on it.
Okay, thank you. Do you know, is there a way, when, when somebody comes in and switches their home over to vacation home rental, is Department of Equalization somehow notified so that it's no longer owner-occupied?
Yeah. I believe that Equalization knows. I'm not one hundred percent familiar with it.
Yeah, that would be interesting, as many of these as we see, that could be a big impact on our, the taxes collected by the county.
Yes, and we've, we've talked to Equalization before on it, on how they're, how they're assessed and how properties around it are assessed, and it really just depends on the vacation home rental. There's no straight answer for it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to give a little insight, I think you're right. You have to be licensed through the state for health. I mean, we've got all that stuff along with the county and so forth, and it should not be owner-occupied. You have to, I mean, there are certain laws, you gotta stay in it for so long to be considered owner-occupied. And most vacation rentals, the reason why I'm saying is because I just bought one last year, or two years ago, my numbers first come in, and I use the place when I can, I have a shop there, and I use it as a vacation rental to help make the payments until I retire. So my numbers come in, and I was just looking at those this morning. You know, when you, when you talk about the requirements, you get checked every year, the conditional use permit's gonna be reviewed yearly. If there's any complaints, they'll, they'll hear about that. So if you have problems with the trash or somebody doing something, you log it, you make complaints, or your concerns known to the county. So that way, when it gets reviewed in another year, or they'll contact the property owner and get those things worked out. That's why they, the property owner has to be, our manager has to be within fifty miles, am I correct, of the property to be able to address any of that. So that might be something, sir, that you wanna grab the number from when this gets done and so forth. I can tell you, you know, when you talk about some of the traffic and so forth, I can tell you from November, October to May, very minimal anybody there. Mike, Mike was at my hearing when I had made my vacation rental, too, so he had concerns too with the traffic and so forth. So I just wanted to give you a little insight on, on where that's at. I don't know these people or what their intentions are, but I can tell you, you know, there's about five months there that there's very little nothing. And the recourse is, there is phone number and contact that, you know, if this doesn't work out, it's a conditional use permit. You know, if there's concerns, don't hesitate to make a phone call, and when it gets reviewed again within a year, that'll be taken care of.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Madam Chair.
It really is incumbent upon the local HOA to go to court on this, isn't it? And what I'm wondering, has this ever been done in South Dakota successfully in spite of this ruling that hovers over everything?
That I'm not sure of. I honestly need Megan here to answer that question.
Well, I think most HOAs don't bother because it's expensive, the law's sort of against them, and then they try to accommodate themselves. And I think our experience has been that in most cases, there's little or no problem. But in this case, like in many of them, it's a new experience. And so there is a tendency to see the dark side of it. But I was just curious if there's ever been a court case in the state which has been, I live in an HOA where we prohibit this kind of thing, and in reality, I don't know if we'd go to court over it. But the reality is, I was just curious if there was any such experience.
I would imagine so, just based off of the courts not depicting between a single-family residence and commercial use. I'd assume there's something, whether it was an HOA that brought it forward or somebody else, I'm not, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Charlie.
Just to assist on this thing about the sales tax license versus commercial, there are a number of areas that our revenue department collects sales taxes where they consider an exchange of revenue takes place. Not necessarily on a commercial basis, the most nefarious of which I can think is if you, you could be a member of a nonprofit that actually has activities to collect money for a donation, and if that, our revenue department after three days, gives you three days to do that, if you go over three days, all your proceeds are taxed. That's a, that, to me, is one of the most nefarious ones when we talk about whether it's commercial or not commercial. Here's now, somebody doing something for donations to assist people, but if that activity runs longer than seventy-two hours, it is taxed, the entire thing, not, they don't give you the three days free after that. So that's an example of a non-commercial use that I can think of. I know there are others. Our revenue department is very, very stringent on what is considered an exchange of revenue. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Mr., Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one, one other comment on the covenants. You know, a lot of these covenants were written a long time ago before a lot of this was happening. I can tell you now, in our area, there's been developed where the covenants say, no, absolutely no vacation rentals, except for maybe one, like Old Hill City Road. He came forward and he said, "these lots over here are not," and he made it into his covenants. And I think also in your covenants also say, if you get fifty percent of the people in that to change it, you can change it. So that's something you can do to, just to let you know about some of the options, sir. So I mean...
I, my, I think my biggest concern is that the only notification we get is a sign sitting out in front of someone's lawn.
Aaron, we gotta ask you to talk. You're actually supposed to reintroduce yourself, to be honest.
Aaron Lormar.
Thank you.
My, my, my biggest problem is that our only notification is a sign that gets put out in front of someone's lawn. We don't get any verbiage or any communication with anybody that's doing this to give us the insight on everything that's actually going on there. So it, it's, it's almost like something being imposed upon all the residents down there.
What size are your lots out there? Because there's usually a five-hundred-foot taken from the air, like a satellite.
Yeah, it's, they're, they average around four acres, just under four acres, so.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
So the only, the adjacent property owners are gonna know anything about it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and up there where it's at, there's a couple people that do have some concern about it, but they haven't really voiced much about it. Where I'm at, I'm down on a dead-end road down there, and my biggest concern is if it starts up there, you know, we have people looking at selling properties down below, so, you know, it's just gonna take over the area down there, too, so.
Thank you, Aaron.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like the wording in the motion to include to update the condition number three to the new verbiage. Is that all right with the motion maker?
Eddie.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Number seven.
Co-SAC Environmental Planner. Item seven is Layout Plan LPL twenty-one, or twenty-two-zero-one. It's to combine two lots to create Lot Forty-five A of Burns Placer MS six ninety-seven. The applicant owner is Charles and Kimberly Klafka, and the surveyor and agent is All Aspects Incorporated Brad Limbo. The size of the property is three point nine eight acres, and it is at one-two-two-eight-seven Deerfield Road. It's currently zoned rural residential district with an existing residential land use. There is special flood hazard area on the property, a zone A, and access is off Deerfield There is, so a little property, property history, Lot Forty-six is vacant. I had a conversation with Charlie this morning, who said there is a structure on that property. I'm guessing Equalization doesn't know about it either, because Equalization didn't have it on their, on their records either.
Could be so old, also. I never thought about that.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll get that checked out before, before the Board of Commissioners meeting. But on Lot Forty-five, there is a single-family residence. There's a twenty-six by twenty-eight detached garage, a ten-by-sixty tool shed. All three of those were built prior to requiring, the requirement of a building permit, and there is a twelve-by-forty covered porch that got a building permit in two thousand and sixteen. They are current on their wastewater treatment system. They have an operating permit from two thousand and nineteen. The proposed lot will be Lot Forty-five A and will contain all the structures and septic. This was routed around for review. There were no major comments or concerns. The county floodplain manager just requested that the floodplain boundaries be put on the, be shown on the MIR. The applicants are proposing to consolidate two lots together to construct an addition on the existing residence. If they were to build that addition now, it'd cross the lot line and impede on it, so they are combining them to meet setbacks. All existing structures are legal non-conforming for setbacks. There's a detached garage that doesn't meet the required rear yard setback, but since that rear lot line's not changing, it'll be legal non-conforming. Rezone will not be required. It is zoned properly. With that, staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. This appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of Layout Plan LPL twenty-two-zero-one with conditions.
Any comments, questions for staff?
Good morning. I'm Frank DeChezere with All Aspects Surveying. I don't have any comments to add, but I'll ask, answer any questions if I can.
One, am I correct, there is another old building, a red building, on a lot that they're showing is vacant?
On forty-six? That's actually news to me. There may be, and we might have missed it in the initial...
It's on the other side of the house, because I guess I drive by there, the detached garage is that way, and there's a building to the other side of the house that's red. It's an old building. I have no idea what size it is or anything, or how close to the house or anything. You just see it from the road.
Had our crew seen it, they would have tied it in, and we'd show it on this plan, but somehow we may have missed that.
Okay. And then I was gonna ask, then you're not the owner?
No, I'm not. We're the surveyor, surveyor of record.
Are you aware that they're putting trusses and new siding and a new roof on the detached garage?
No, but...
Because that would require a building permit, I believe, and should be notified to the...
Whether or not they got a building permit, I couldn't answer that, because that would...
Yeah, I understand that. But I just, I was asking whether you were aware of that was going on.
Co-SAC Environmental Planner, there is no building permit for it on record, but staff will go up there, either I or Dwayne's usually up there, our ordinance enforcement officer, can stop by and take some pictures of it and see what they're...
Okay. This is a terrible thing to ask, but if that happens, does that change the, in other words, if they issue a building permit, does that change the setbacks and everything else that you're dealing with here on this one?
I don't believe so, because they're not increasing the non-conformity. So if they were going closer to the lot line, it would, but since they're just...
Because my intent certainly isn't to change that. I think this is probably a good thing for the owners, so that they can get their addition.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't only, it would only change if they were increasing the non-conformity, going closer to the line or extending the structure.
Making it prettier, it looks like, to be honest. They're doing a good job of rehabilitating the building. It's a rather old building, the detached garage. Thank you, both of you.
Hey, you're welcome. Just one additional comment or a request I would make. I'd like that the commissioners reconsider the showing of the floodplain on the final plat. They're dynamic, they move. If we memorialize the floodplain on a plat of record, somebody could misinterpret that in the future if FEMA comes in and realigns the floodplain. That's just something I would like you all to consider, please.
Madam Chair, would you accept a motion?
Yes.
I'd move we continue this to the twenty-eighth meeting, so that we can find out about the building permit, address what the survey has just brought up, and we'll look at it again.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight.
Co-SAC Environmental Planner. Item number eight is Rezone RZ twenty-one-three-oh. It's to rezone nine point five one, five-four-one... It's to rezone 9.51, 541 acres from suburban residential district to agriculture district. The applicant is Paula HH Ranky Family Trust. The agent is Renner Associates. This was heard before the Planning Commission on November 22nd, 2021. And the Planning Commission continued it to today's meeting to give an update on the planning process through the city of Rapid City. Just a little background, they're, they're looking to incorporate the 9.5 or 4, 5 acre chunk into the property, and they want to rezone it to agriculture. But agriculture requires 10 acres, so we can't rezone a chunk of property that's under that 10 acres. So they'd have to file the plat through the city of Rapid City first, and at this time, they still haven't filed that plat through registered deeds. So staff is recommending to continue Rezone RZ 21-30 to the April 25th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number nine.
Item number nine is Planning and Development Overlay PU 22-01. It's to allow Planning and Development Overlay for a specialty resort to include four rental cabins and the existing single family residence to be used as a vacation home rental, slash caretaker slash manager's residence. The applicant and landowner is Nick and Romina Hopeart. It's, the site location is 11477 Gillette Prairie Road. It's zoned, it's currently zoned agriculture district with the existing land use as residential with a guest house. Access is off Gillette Prairie Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When reviewing Planning and Development, we look at two sets of criteria. For the first set of criteria is that the zoning ordinance, section 216, lists the following standards and requirements, so apply to all PUD overlay districts. The answers are on the screen. I'll, I'll read them. So for number one, yes, the uses proposed in the PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditionally used, used as permitted in agriculture district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are the type that are located to minimize detrimental influence upon the surrounding properties. However, the access is through the property, or to the property, is a private access easement that runs through a neighboring property. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking in agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is 10 acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicant and managers, Nick and Romina Hopeart. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven, Pennington County's zoning ordinance, section 1510, listed in the following table. So again, I'll read the answers. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare to the public. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay districts should not substantially impair or diminish the usage values or enjoyment of the property and the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted. However, the access is through a property, through a private access easement that runs through a neighboring property. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and ingress to minimize traffic congestion on Gillette Prairie Road. Number six, yes, the requested uses conform to all applicable regulations of the agriculture district with an approved PUD overlay district. And number seven, yes, future land use is identified as ranch, large lot, residential, natural areas is consistent with the, with, is consistent use within this district. Currently on the property, there is a single family residence that was built in 2003. A 16 by 24 guest cabin that was built in 2015 with approval of a conditional use permit. There's a confinement barn, 62 by 24, that was built in 1979. A steel grain building built in 1960, and several small sheds under 144 square feet that do not require a permit. And a pole barn 35 by 40, that's not assessed by DOE. They are current on their on-site wastewater treatment system. They have a operating license from 2021. This was routed around for another part of review. There were no objections or concerns received. The applicants are requesting a PUD overlay to be able to do short-term rentals of their guest cabin and residence and build another cabin for short-term rental. Staff has received comments from the neighbors with concerns over the use of the private access easement. That's the letter that is in the packet. Staff has spoken with the applicant, who stated he is working with his neighbors on the access easement concerns. The applicant also stated that he agrees that he's in agreement to only build one additional cabin at this time. It was advertised for four. He said he doesn't necessarily need four. And the uses of the property will be vacation home, managers' residence, and cabin rentals. So staff is recommending approval of Planning and Development Overlay PU 22-01 with conditions.
Questions?
Cody, is there any legal thing signed on the easement?
That I'm not sure of. I could not find an easement, and easement wasn't provided. I'm sure that there is an actual easement. I just couldn't, couldn't locate it at registered deeds.
Okay, the other thing is, when, and I looked at a bigger satellite photo, when you get through your property and then your dad's property, that other section that goes up to the Gillette Prairie Road, is that Forest Service?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and, and staff contacted Forest Service about it, and Forest Service was not concerned with, in, in addition to their regular comments. I contacted Jacob, and Jacob wasn't concerned with the uses going through the Forest Service line.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Other question, Charlie?
Okay, just, and this is a clerical one, on page three of six. Well, you got to turn to item number eight up on top, and it should be nine. Then I'm going over to condition number four on two of six. I think we should name the number of vacation home rentals. And then I'm gonna do it again, but the burn, I think we ought to get a burning pit, pit condition in there, under our new guidelines. And then the last one is, and I'm, I'm not sure where you guys are at on this one. Correct me if I'm, there's two things. Correct me if I'm wrong. Access, whether it's written or whatever, if it's done over years and whatnot. The county just recently, or Board of Commissioners did some work within the last year, and defined what they talk about as access, 25 feet and whatever. But there's limited restrictions you can put on the use of that. In other words, even if the property owner wouldn't like him putting his address up, and we had this happen in ours, they didn't like the address up because it ends up on the access. Well, I mean, there's requirements, your address has got to be there. But you have the right to use that 25 foot of width or whatever, as if it was your own, even though it is not. And that's always been my understanding. But then my last thing is, it said, our, our environmental director said a favorable recommendation cannot be issued for this proposal at this time. And I just wondered why, or whether they commented on that. So that's all I've got for you, Cody. To muck up the water. But that's a big one to me, a favorable recommendation cannot, and I think it has to do with the fact that we don't know the locations, because we don't have a permit on file when it was put in. I think that's what it's about, from reading this, but I'm guessing.
Correct, and, and knowing, knowing Aaron, and, and I can talk to him later about it. My guess is, um, is that he's, he's putting that because he doesn't know the size of the drain field.
Right. Or whether it's under a driveway or whatever, yeah.
Correct, so my guess would be that he's not necessarily in favorable recommendation of anything being added to that specific septic system, without knowing exactly what additional.
Yeah, because he didn't say, he didn't approve it, or right now, or, or something against it. That was all the same. We might want to clarify that and clean it up, is all I'm getting at.
Yeah, and I can, I can talk to him about it and, uh, figure out what, what he would require prior to the Board of Commissioners.
I know we've got a wire in them on the newer ones, but we didn't have the wire years ago if it was an older one.
Yeah, and, and generally, staff, we will require, um, that you go out and, and get the size of your septic system based off of if you're adding a use to it. If we don't know exactly what's going on with it and the size of everything, we can require you to go out and, um, measure it. There's different things that installers can do to do that. So he would definitely have to do that if he was trying to hook anything to this, the, the existing septic system. If he was building a cabin farther down and a, and building a new septic system on top, or with it. He wouldn't have to meet that requirement. He would just have to size it for whatever that cabin.
I agree with you, because we're talking about two to five, uh, vacation home rentals right now, and we're down to one and one. It'd be two possible, so. I, I thank you. I just did that for clarification. It doesn't really say that he poses it or anything. It just.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I'll, I'll get his, um, his, his input on it before the Board of Commissioners meeting. But knowing him and his conversation in the past on these items, that's, I'm guessing that's what he would, what he was referring to.
I just wanted to clean it up, because these things do get a little touchy with, sometimes with the folks in the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a question. If we approve the overlay, it's, how it's stated is to include four rental cabins in the existing single family residence. We're not giving approval for them to build four cabins. They still have to come in for building permits for each.
Correct, they'd have to get, they'd have to, oh, sorry, not to enter.
No, and so septic needs requirements would have to be met for each building permit.
Correct, when he came in to get a building permit, if he was gonna hook it to that, that drain field that he, that, um, Aaron doesn't have enough information on, at the building permit time, would, he'd be required to submit that information that shows that the septic system is sized for that cabin and the guest cabin, or a new septic system application for a different treatment system.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments from the public? Sure, come on up.
Nick Hopeart. I do have the access easement here. I was just gonna say in case I had to give it to them or.
It would maybe be a good thing to give a copy to the, to the planning staff, so they have it in their file.
Okay. Sounds good, and I think, um, as far as I know, you know, the, the, the only complaint there was, because they're, my dad and his wife are actually trying to sell their place, and they were kind of concerned, but as it is, I had only wanted to do, in a sense, rent the one cabin and possibly the house at times. But with the, uh, oh, with the resort, they called it, a specialty resort. They were saying that if ever in the future I thought about it, it might be best to do it now, to save another three or four cabins. If that was an issue, we could put it as a condition that it would just be one more, or just the one, as it is, so.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's it.
Madam Chair, I've got a question for Nick. Nick, there was one approval that, um, they were suggesting that now or in the future, you're, the access in the driveway needs to be named, and it has to do with, uh, emergency numbering system. Is that something that you would be interested in or oppose, or?
I wouldn't be opposed to it. And of course, out at Gillette Prairie Road, past the Forest Service easement is where our, our 11477, you know, the actual 911 signs are located. But no, if it was something we had to name, I guess.
I think he was alluding to that if we built the four cabins and we had one, you're, you're only allowed five addresses. And, um, and I'm sure that's where they were coming from, was emergency on the five address, and then you got to have a road so you can have more addresses.
Uh, yeah.
Is that correct, or what, Cody?
Uh, Co-SAC Environmental Planner, there's two things, there's a couple of things that Ted looks at. There's the add, number of address points, and then there's also the distance back from, from the main road to it. If it's over a certain distance, they also like it named, um, for addressing purposes. My guess is it's kind of a combination of both in, in this, in this certain, plus it's a, it's a specialty resort, so they want to be able to respond out there if they, if they can.
But is that something then we should initiate now and get going for Nick, so that he doesn't have to run into that and make the applications himself? And I don't know whether there's funds involved or whatever down the road.
Yeah, there's, uh, um, any road naming goes in front of Planning Commission and the board. I think it's a hundred dollar application fee to name the road, and then, um, the payment for the sign to be posted, um, for highway to pay for the sign. So there's, there's some fees, but I can, I can work with him after the meeting on getting that going.
Yeah, I see a catch 22. In other words, if he did want to proceed on that, using the four, now we're getting up to the max address thing. And then he's got to apply, or if we wanted to name it for future use, that's, is that a different case?
No, so what, what would end up, sorry, what would, what would end up happening would be, um, once there was four or five addresses on that, whoever would come in for the building permit for it, wouldn't be able to get an address on there until the road was named. So it can be done now, or it could be done at the building permit. I would recommend sooner.
Can I ask how much his request is going, going to cost him to, to name the road?
Uh, just the application fee and the, and the sign. I don't, I'm not sure how much the sign costs.
I mean, is it 500, 300? Do you know?
I don't think so. I think it's bringing.
I'm just worried, because young people do these things, and they get started, they've got to know where they're headed with their budget.
Sure, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. I do know that our highway department does it at a pretty reasonable cost. Yes, because they would prefer to have those posted.
Because they install a sign and that sort of thing, so there is some charges, and I know.
There is, but I, I believe it's reasonable.
All right. Then I have one more question. After listening to all this, Nick, is this something you still could live with, with your four requests? In other words, because you're going to run into this, it appears.
Nick Hopeart, yes, that'd be, I mean, something we could deal with down the road, and it does make sense. I never thought that, even like your road is cobish.
Oh, everyone.
You know.
That's how you get more addresses, Nick.
Yeah. No, but that's something I could deal with, of course.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions, Cody?
Uh, so staff, um, would like to just add a condition in there, um, that all of the requirements of section 24J are followed. That's the on-site wastewater treatment system ordinance, so that would take care of any concerns with this septic.
Okay.
24G?
204J.
204J, okay. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I approve, I, I would move to approve this per staff's recommendation with the addition of, um, the appropriate burn pits condition, and an additional condition on all, um, regulations required by Pennington County, 24, 204J, be adhered to. Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 10.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item 10 is the County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners heard Planning Commission's recommendations from their January 10th and January 24th meetings on the Tuesday, February 1st, Board of Commissioners meetings. For Rezone 2132, for Michael and Angela Holmberg, for Renner Associates as the agent, to rezone one acre from agriculture district to low density residential district. They did continue that to the February 15th board meeting. And then on the comprehensive plan amendment 2116, rezone 2134 and rezone 2135 for Valley Development LLC. That was the recommendation for the urban residential zoning. It was approved by the Board of Commissioners at the February 1st meeting. And then ordinance amendment 2125 to amend the subdivision regulations will be heard on the, by the board on the Tuesday, February 15th meeting. will be heard on the, by the board on the Tuesday, February fifteenth meeting.
Thank you. There's no public, so. Items from staff.
Items from staff, the building permit report, we were on pace for similar to January. It looks like the overall cost per permit is significantly higher, but other than that, it looks like we're at the same pace as last year for January.
Thank you. Items for membership. Or questions on the, for Brittany?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Brittany, just a question, you know, with everything, costs and materials going up, I was looking at some of your building permits, are these evaluations on some of these building permits fairly accurate? You know, I see one for like three hundred and eighty thousand, I see a lot of them for thirty thousand, six thousand. How do we know these are accurate numbers? Do we just do best guess scenario? Just ask them for a pray?
Sure, they can be calculated in one of two ways. Under our ordinance, they can be calculated by a contractor's bid, we can utilize that number, or we use the ICC, which is the International Code Council. They put a cost per square footage for different types of structures, they take kind of a national average, a cost per square foot, so we use that and update that every year, with that number.
And that's how, how often does that get updated, that, that international code that you?
Every year in August, but we don't update them until January one, because we find that it'd be difficult to change gears.
Sure.
Like in September, so we just implement those ones that come out in August of the year prior, and then implement them January one.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Items for membership.
Madam Chair, you might want to ask your public again.
Pardon?
Oh.
Your public came back. Adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.